Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Sohegan Cooperative School District Public Hearing for the Fiscal Year 2024 Budget. We'll get started right away at 5:02, and I want to make sure everybody received the handouts that are over here if you're in the room. And I don't know if anybody wants them via online, if it's something we can do.
Yep.
They can have access. Okay. All right. Go for it. Then I'd say go on to the next one. We'll start there. All right. Good evening, and thank you for attending Sohegan Cooperative School District Public Hearing for Fiscal Year 2024 Budget. I want to thank the staff at the SAU and the administration at Sohegan High School for their efforts to help prepare the budget that will be presented tonight. Preparing the budget includes many hours of work, discussions with staff, administration, school board members, and the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee. I would especially like to thank Mike Berry, Galen Trembley, and Amy Facy for their guidance on the budget and the presentation preparation. Thirty years ago, we opened our doors to the first students of Sohegan High School. Our mission statement is Sohegan High School aspires to be a community of learners born of respect, trust, and courage. We consciously commit ourselves to support and engage an individual's gifts, passions, and intentions, to develop the mind, body, and heart, to challenge and expand the comfortable limits of thought, tolerance, and performance, and to inspire and honor the active stewardship of family, nation, and globe. To quote Mike Berry, Principal Sohegan High School, "At the heart of our mission is creating an educational environment that not only challenges our students intellectually, but also cultivates and sustains positive relationships." With this focus on developing academic stamina and resilience towards navigating academic and social challenges, we will help students be prepared for the many facets of life they will encounter. The portrait of the graduate was developed to demonstrate the six key skills we know are highly desired by employers and are requisites for entrepreneurs. These skills are consistent with our mission statement to develop student agency and responsibility. Our mission statement and portrait of a graduate are used as guideposts to develop our curriculum, student engagement, and school processes. On the next slide is a brief look at our student population at the high school. You can see that our class levels remain consistent. The 11th grade class is smaller, but the classes behind them are consistently stable or increasing. An enrollment for the 8th grade class that will be matriculating to Sohegan High School next year is 183 students. So you are seeing consistent class sizes for the upcoming years. In order to create our budget, we balance the student populations with the course offerings that students are requesting to ensure we have the proper level of staffing of required courses. Reviewing our next slide, where we're looking to maintain staffing at the FY23 working budget level. The difference between the default budget and the working budget staffing levels is the requirement of a full-time business teacher and a half-time science teacher. The number of students requesting various business classes, including personal finance and marketing, and science courses include chemistry, engineering, and marine environmental science classes, has increased in the past two years. The next slide is a review of our support staff. Our new special education administrator at Sohegan High School has reviewed our processes and aligned the level of required special education teachers and paraprofessionals with the needs of the student population. Based on the needs of our student population, the new review of our coverage, we are able to reduce our special education staff by four FTEs. Also, we are requesting an increase in the headcount in the guidance counseling staff by .15 to create a full-time position. We currently have a senior-level .85 guidance counselor who is retiring, and we will be budgeting the same salary amount for a full-time new guidance counselor. The increase is needed due to the level of engagement the guidance counseling staff has with students to help them navigate Sohegan High School academically and socially, to encourage exploration of CTE, or what is known as vocational education classes, and ELO, or external learning opportunities, and to work with our students to navigate the processes of the next steps after high school, whether it is a four-year college or university, community college, work, or military. The next slide shows the trends of our students and teachers over the past 12 years. The staffing level trends have been consistent with student population. The next slide is a summary of items you will see included in the budget. Included in the FY24 budget is a business teacher, a .5 science teacher, creating an athletic trainer position that is currently filled by a contractor, and increasing the guidance counselor position to full-time. Our focus over this year and next is to continue to improve instructional practice and student engagement, and to examine our current graduation requirements to ensure that they are prepare our students for the next steps after high school. So on to the budget. And we go on. Perfect. Then that's our operating warrant article. The FY24 operating budget we are proposing is $20,368,691, which is $555,891, or a 2.8 increase from the current year budget. The default budget calculation would be an increase of $119,551 from FY23 operating budget. And we are going to walk through those differences later. So the next slide. Oh, I probably shouldn't have that up. So that's our summary. I meant to put that up a little bit earlier. But on to the next slide. It shows the breakdown of the budget by category. Each of these categories is reviewed by the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee and school board members to understand what is included in the costs and to ensure that any changes are aligned to our mission. I'd like to highlight some of these changes in each of the categories. So on transportation, transportation has increased $171,744. The increase in transportation is due to the increase in contract costs with regular and special education transportation. Regular transportation is an increase of approximately $40,390 in FY24 due to the contract previously signed with the bus company. That includes the increases in cost of busing, as well as higher fuel costs, which exceed cap on fuel costs. Included in transportation is the cost of special education transportation. The costs included in the budget are an estimate of costs as our contract ended this year with our provider. Our business administrator is currently working with the response to the RFP that was received to negotiate costs on a new contract. We do know that the minimum increase based on the estimate received is going to increase the cost of special education transportation by at least $181,000. Due to an increase in fuel and wages, as well as a shortage of bus drivers, the costs are increasing significantly. Special education transportation is required by law, and we do not have the ability to cut costs in this area. However, our business administrator is working diligently with the transportation provider to negotiate appropriate fees. Areas that have helped to decrease transportation costs are related to CTE transportation and athletics. Because the school district purchased new vans a little over a year ago, we were able to provide our own transportation for students attending certain CTE programs by providing our own bus and using our own staff. This has decreased the cost by approximately $75,000. Our athletic programs are also looking to use these vans when available, based on the size of the team and the availability of the vans. Looking at facilities, which has increased $195,146, the cost drivers for the facilities budget include the request of an assistant groundskeeper to help maintain the field at Sohegan High School. This is a request of salary and benefit increases of $89,064. Sohegan High School has many playing fields to maintain, as well as general maintenance of the grounds. We have paid a contractor in prior years in order to help keep us on a maintenance schedule. It would be more effective to hire an employee to help maintain the grounds year-round instead of paying a third-year party contractor. Our cost drivers for other increases include $7,000 for heating system repairs, $8,000 for property and liability insurance, $17,900 for service contracts that provide preventative maintenance on our systems, increase of $4,000 in heating and natural gas, and $46,500 request for replacement of the John Deere Gator, which has reached the end of life. In the curriculum budget, the focus on the curriculum budget is to provide a strong, rigorous education that engages all students. The administration at Sohegan High School has been working with staff to refresh our course offerings to increase the rigor in the classroom and provide engaging lessons to our students. We are discussing ways to increase time in the classroom and hours of education. Education is not a static environment. It is always changing. And our focus this year and next is to help each student become the best learner they can become and engage them in the classroom. Curriculum represents the largest percentage of the costs in the budget, and there is an increase of $592,748, or 8% for the FY24 operating budget. The increases include $184,984 due to teachers receiving the increased step on their policy schedule, as well as including the proposed business teacher and science teacher. This amount also includes the reclassification of domain leaders from the administration budget to the curriculum budget. So that's not really an increase in the overall budget, but it is an increase in this category with the offsetting decrease in the administration category. There is an increase of $131,434 due to increase in healthcare and dental costs, and the rates increased 4.1% for healthcare and 1.5% for dental. These benefit increases also include the addition of the business science teacher, as well as the domain leader reclassification costs. There's an increase of other benefit payments of $43,573 due to 403V. There is also an increase in retirement payments of $43,500 per the agreement with the PPC, and this is based on what the staff has informed us they plan to retire next year. We have also included $40,000 for staff substitutes, which have not been substituted, would have not been sufficiently budgeted in the past few years. And we have an additional out-of-district tuition of $16,500 in this budget, and a final increase is due of $48,135. It's due to the need to replace their computers in one of the computer labs in the annex. The computers have reached the end of life, and the technology staff reviewed different scenarios regarding replacement, both in types of computers in the lab, as well as considering one-to-one computers that are sufficient for students taking the programming classes, but based on the cost and computer requirements, this is the most cost-effective scenario for replacement. Looking at athletics, the increase in athletic budget is mainly due to adding the athletic trainer to the staff. We currently contract with a third party to provide the training. It is becoming more difficult to maintain a contract for our school size, and we believe that providing a staff member who knows the student athletes and can engage them on a consistent basis to provide appropriate services is a stronger solution for the safety of our students. Also in the budget is a $5,000 stipend to support the athletic program at the Amherst Middle School. This change is due to providing cohesive program throughout our SAU school districts. It is common practice among other school districts, and we are looking forward to supporting the program practice in SAU 39. This additional $5,000 expense in our budget will be covered by revenue that's received from the Amherst School District. We are required to include all expenses in the budget, which is why you see this increase here. The revenue would be included in the revenue analysis that is later in the discussion. In food service, we see a decrease of $22,328, or 4%. And the main reasons for this decrease are a decrease in healthcare costs of approximately $9,600, a decrease in equipment repair of $35,800. There is an increase due to a purchase of a replacement of one of the ovens for $17,500. The oven is over 20 years old and has reached the end of life. And we have also budgeted $25,000 for the increase in food costs that are estimated for next year. We've all experienced the increase in costs at the grocery store, and our school is also seeing increase in our costs. The remaining decrease in the budget is caused by the increase in revenue from food service purchased by staff and students, and we want to thank this kitchen staff for providing breakfast and lunches that encourage students to come to the cafeteria. In administration, the decrease in administration is mainly due to the reclassification of the domain leader salaries to the curriculum budget. In prior years, they were fully expensed in administration. However, domain leaders work both in administration and teach classes in the curriculum budget, and therefore we need to reclassify half their salaries and benefits to curriculum, causing a $145,000 decrease in administration. There is an increase in apportionment from the SAU expenses to Sohegan of $15,581. The total charge from the SAU is $915,008. To support these expenses, I'm going to take a few minutes and describe the services we receive from the central office. We receive curriculum and instruction support from the assistant superintendents and superintendent. We are able to review and revise the grading system over the summer, as well as revise the rubrics used in grading. Our science and English language arts curriculum was reviewed in detail for alignment to state standards and increase in rigor with planned additional curriculum in the upcoming years for all level of students. Support for improved instruction practices was also addressed during the school year, as well as the summer. We would not have been able to accomplish all of this work without the support of the superintendent and assistant superintendent, as well as, excuse me. We would not be able to accomplish all this work with the support of the superintendent assistant superintendent this past summer. The SAU superintendent and assistant superintendent also provide support in the staff evaluation process that has been implemented during the past year and a half. The finance department provides manifest and payroll processing for all employees, budget preparation, state filings, contract RFP process and negotiations, and coordination of all our transportation of our students. Human resources provide support in the hiring process of all staff and administration. They manage healthcare, dental, all benefits provided by the SAU, and ensure that we are in compliance with the PPC agreement. This department also provides any filings required to the state DOE. Director of Technology supports all of our school networking communication. The employees in this department support wide-area network communication, servers, backups, and technology requests. Director of Student Nutrition works with Sohegan High School chef to plan meals, order food and supplies, and budget for repairs and replacements. She also files work with families in need to ensure they receive free and reduced meals and files all DOE paperwork. Also in the SAU, the special education department's support provided by them allows for a cohesive program for all of our students. They work with special education administration in each building to provide comprehensive programs that not only meet state requirements, but provide a safe education space for the students to learn. This is not a one-size-fits-all program, and as each student has specific needs, all IAPs and 504 documents are reviewed to ensure we are complying with all state requirements. The staff in the SAU also file all required reports with the state, file grants to provide financial support for our programs. They file with Medicaid providers to provide financial support for our programs and answer any questions for families. They are an amazing group of people with compassion for our students and families. The Director of Building and Grounds works with all students in our SAU, with all our schools in our SAU, to provide a schedule of maintenance for buildings, thorough inspection of our systems, work with scheduling contractors at reasonable rates, and manage small construction projects like our secure front entrance and our locker room renovation. Many of you here has thanked Roger Preston during our meetings, as he has taken the time to form a thorough review of all our systems and prepare a 10- to 20-year outlook for budgeting purposes. This plan will allow us to look at different funding mechanisms to ensure our facilities are well-maintained. Because of the support received from the SAU office, we are able to focus on our business of our education students. So this is why we do get charged $918,000 from the SAU, but those are all the services we do receive from them, and it's a great support to our school. So looking at the next category is student services. The student services budget has decreased by $235,000, and this budget is built by reviewing our student populations that have IAP and 504 programs. These are plans that define what supports and services the students will receive through the school year. The special education budget is built on these requirements, and it develops how many special education teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses, or other support staff that might be needed, as well as occupational physical and speech therapies. Based on known students in the high school or those matriculating from 8th grade into the high school, we have been able to decrease our budget this year. Some of the specifics in the budget include a $272,000 decrease due to the decrease in special education staffing. There is an $81,570 decrease due to decrease in cost related to out-of-district tuition and residential costs. And again, these are costs related to specific needs and placement of students. We've also were able to reduce $41,000 by no longer needing a one-on-one nurse as support. But also in this category, there are offsetting increases. There's a $91,073 increase for speech, hearing, physical therapy, and occupational therapy services. There's a $41,107 increase for ESOL support, and there's also increase in benefits of $13,815. Our school district has taken the approach to do what we can to support our students in-house, rather than pay tuition and send them to another school. We have done this because it saves us money, and we feel it provides a better education in our school and support to our families. The cost of sending a student out of district includes tuition, services, and daily transportation. Tuition can be anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000 and much more, depending on the need of the student and the type of specialized school required. If we keep our students in-house, we can show a cost savings of approximately $50,000. This choice does make a difference in our cost per pupil if you ever start looking at that calculation. Our cost per pupil will be higher because tuition costs are deducted from all costs to calculate cost per pupil. Not being able to deduct tuition makes us having to include all of the other personal costs in the calculation, causing the cost per pupil to be higher. However, the actual cash outlay for these costs is lower, and it is better for the taxpayer. And in our final category, technology, that has decreased $54,836, or 17%. And two items in there causing this decrease is a decrease in salary and benefits related to a decrease in the salary for a technology person and a decrease in software and technology infrastructure of $13,854. So we can go on to the next slide when we start talking about our default calculation. The default budget is a calculation where you take the prior year budget, remove one-time costs, and add contractual requirements. As you can see, we start with the FY23 budget of $19,897,800. We remove the special warrant article that passed of $85,000 for the turf replacement. And so we start with a budget of $19,812,800. Then we remove the one-time expenses of around $2,000. We add in special education service requirements of $209,613. We add the increase in the SAU assessment of $15,581, as it is a contractual obligation. We then add in the PPC contract agreed salary increases and related benefits, which are offset by the decrease in special education staffing. Food service cost increases are added in, but are offset by revenue and the revenue analysis. Again, we are required to budget for all expenses, even if there is offsetting revenue. The majority of costs in the other category for out-of-district tuition, which is a contractual obligation for another district. The total obligation, so then the total addition to the FY23 budget to calculate the default budget is $119,551, which gives us a default budget calculation for FY24 of $19,932,351. The next slide shows what we call at-risk items, or items that we may not be able to support if we have a default budget. These items include supporting the full-time business teacher and .5 science teacher. Even if the students are asking for these classes, we would have to consider whether monies are available. The groundskeeper position would be at risk to support the maintenance of our ground, the hiring of the athletic trainer, which supports all of our students. The salary and benefit increases for non-PPC staff would be removed, and the ability to provide the proper level of cost of substitutes needed throughout the year. We would also have to look at the maintenance schedule of our systems to see if we can put off any maintenance. This would cause a build of needed work in the following year. Also, we would work with our technology staff to support the computer lab with older equipment. The next slide is a pie chart that shows the breakout of categories. As you can see, 73.7% of the total budget is in salaries and benefits. Our staff is a tremendous asset to our school system, and we appreciate the dedication, hard work they provide to students every day. Student services is 7.1% of our budget, and facilities is 4.2%. And then you can see the rest of them there where transportation, curriculum, administration, food service, and athletics round out the rest of the budget. So on to the next area. So I spent quite a bit of time on the expense side of the budget, and I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss the revenue side. So on this chart, you can see the estimated revenue for food service, grants, and other federal, state, and local revenue, and our estimated fund balance that is returned to the taxpayer. Food service and grants are estimated to be small increases, but the significant change is in the other federal, state, local revenue and estimated fund balance. The estimated fund balance includes unused expenses and any revenues received. These revenues can be unpredictable, and we do not currently know excess revenues we may receive this year. In FY23, we receive money from health trusts, our medical manager, for return of excess funds. We have not received this in FY24, as well as other revenues, and therefore the estimate of unreserved fund balance is much lower. Because of this significant change, we'll have to have a lower revenue amount for FY24. On the next chart, it shows our projected tax effort. The projected tax effort is calculated by taking the budget appropriations and offset it by the estimated revenue. Then you decrease your appropriations by the estimated revenue for statewide property tax and the estimated amount to be received by the state for adequacy aid. As you can see on the chart, there's estimated increase in tax effort of $1,104,66. Approximately $633,000 of the increase is due to less estimated revenue to be received, and $470,000 is due to an increase in requested budgeted appropriations. Please keep in mind that I use the word estimate, as this is exactly what revenue is. We don't exactly know what we are receiving until the money is calculated and sent by the Department of Revenue and DOE, as well as knowing the amounts of grants to be received. So the projected tax effort. Yes, okay, the projected tax impact from the projected tax effort. We start with the estimated tax effort and split it between the town of Amherst and the town of Mont Vernon based on the ADMR and the equalized valuation of the towns. Using the valuation by town, we can calculate the tax rate impact of 43 cents for the town of Amherst and 29 cents for the town of Mont Vernon. So this is what we're currently projecting. Thanks to Amy and all her hard work, we actually have this number earlier than we typically have, so thank you so much for that support. But that is our presentation for the budget warrant article. We do have other warrant articles, but I'd like to see if Sohegan Finance Committee would like to speak now, and then we'll take questions. Okay.
This one's already on.
Thank you. Want me to go through that again?
Just hold it one second.
I'm just going to bring that up for you.
So I'm Jeannie Lute. I am the Chair of the Sohegan Finance Committee, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank the committee this year for all of their hard work, in addition to the administration and the board and all of the department heads for having the patience to answer all of our questions and to help us really get a hold of the budget and understand it completely. And the one thing I wanted to share is that not everybody understands the makeup of the Finance Committee. There are seven regular members. In our case, there are five from Amherst and two from Mont Vernon, so they pretty much reflect the board. The moderator is able to find great volunteers, and the way that we operate is that our role as a committee is to provide independent due diligence into the budgeting process and outcomes to ensure that all costs are accounted for, and all options for the delivery of a quality education expected by the citizens of Amherst and Mont Vernon are And all options for the delivery of a quality education expected by the citizens of Amherst and Mont Vernon are thoroughly evaluated. And I have to say that our committee worked very hard to achieve those goals with, with a collaborative effort on the part of the, of the board and the administration. It's not always, it's not always that way. So we want to certainly recognize that this year. I also would like to introduce, if possible, the folks who are on the finance committee who are here. John Duckett, Bill Borden, Mark Cheney, Christine Grayson, Howard Brown. And I think that's missing.
Paul, Paul's not here.
From Mont Vernon. So we're thankful that everybody's here tonight. The other thing is to let you know that we will be presenting a, a brief slideshow tonight. And that we will be actually meeting after this meeting to actually vote on the budget. So I believe that we have left the, the vote blank on these slides, just to let you know. The other thing is that because this is a work in, in cross, in progress, there may be some, some tweaks to it between now and deliberative. So we will go into much more depth with this report at deliberative. So tonight, if we could start out with the first slide. This lists all the folks. The other thing I forgot to mention is that the process for reviewing the budget means that we are divided into functions and we pair up. Obviously, everyone in this room knows that, but not everybody in the public knows it. But we pair up with each, a, a board member and then meet to discuss a particular function of the budget in detail. And so that, in the, as a result of that, is the reports that we put together at the end of that process. And you'll see that at the end of our slides here. All right, next one, thank you. So these are the, the basic metrics on which we, we sort of viewed the budget. This also has, you know, the, the numbers, I think they need to be tweaked a slight bit, but no, they're
Just on the three-year average, everything else.
Okay, yeah, the three-year average maybe have to be tweaked, but the rest of it is pretty much what was presented in the board's slides tonight. The next one. Again, this is our, the, sort of the mission of the finance committee. Again, basically what I mentioned to you earlier, so we could probably move on. Our recommendations are at this point, that the two point four percent increase is reasonable and very well justified. The budget addresses key priorities. They are, and, and we have identified these priorities and, and are happy to see that and some of these have things, things that we've mentioned in the past, that they seem to, to be well addressed this year. The continued effort to address the conditions of the buildings consistent with a long-term maintenance plan, which is a priority. There's also been a commitment to make all of our buildings watertight. Thus, you know, a phased-in plan for the leaking skylights. It addresses pressing needs in various areas, including kitchen equipment, building furnishings and facilities maintenance. And the proposed budget supports the core objective to improve student performance through improved classroom instruction, increased focus on teacher proficiency in subject areas, improve professional development programming for faculty and ensuring that teachers are fairly and objectively evaluated. So we see that in this budget, which means a great deal. Next slide. Again, we, we have, we have to take a vote on that, so.
We're going with support.
But that's missing from this. And the next slide may be regarding the other articles that haven't been presented. So we should probably stop there.
Do you want to speak once we're done with the rest of the warrant articles?
That'd be good.
Sure. Okay, I just, with anybody here, I'm just going to open it up because we, I gave a lot of information. Is there any questions from the public? That would like to come forward? And just make sure you introduce yourself and see what town you're from.
My name is Anne Dodd. I'm from Mont Vernon and I have two questions. One is I would like to know how much the total increase for the SAU is and how it was apportioned because it doesn't seem like it was apportioned in a way that I can understand with Mont Vernon and Sohegan.
So the SAU assessment or?
The total amount SAU
The total
increased was?
So, just, well, I just, yeah. So the total amount, not just what was apportioned to Sohegan.
Correct.
I have to go back and look.
What's the total, total portion, total SAU budget?
SAU budget.
The SAU budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause she wants to understand.
Oh, okay. To each district. And yes, but specifically with Sohegan, how it goes to the two different towns. Okay. So that's a different budget.
Yes, that's what I'm like.
No. So, SAU. So the SAU apportionment, no, the total amount, it went up. The total SAU budget?
The total SAU budget.
Oh, the total SAU budget, okay. The total SAU budget. Not the, not the amount apportioned, not.
She's asking the whole amount.
Okay, the total budget was, is three million forty-five nine twenty-two.
That's the total budget for the, what was the increase of?
From last year, from this year.
Okay. I know.
Find this. FY twenty three to FY twenty-four. One seventeen nine seven six.
Okay, and approximately fifteen thousand of that was assigned to Sohegan. And how is that apportionment accomplished? Because is it students or budget or?
Yep, so it's, it's an apportionment formula. Based on average daily membership and valuation. Yep, I'm sorry, average daily membership in attendance.
For students.
For students.
Attendance.
And apportionment, so it's not just student
Yep.
Membership.
So in the SAU budget, there's a, one of the tabs in there goes through all the calculations. So if you want to do a deep dive, I'm happy to sit with you and go through that.
Okay, I just don't understand how little got cut, got put here and how much got put elsewhere. So that's a question for another meeting. Okay. The other question is there's an eighty-nine thousand dollar employee to take care of fields, but the fields are covered with snow in the winter and they're not used by the school in the summer. So how does it make sense to have a full-time employee to take care of the fields?
Cause they also help do all the snow plowing, all snow clearing, other work. It's all grounds. So it's all grounds. It's not just field maintenance, but it's all grounds. So.
So that this year that is being accomplished how?
Contracted service.
Plowing?
Contracted, we contracted out of.
Plowing? Thank you.
It was.
It's all different.
Yeah. I thought it was. We wanted, we wanted to have our own truck. We don't. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right, so as a board, I'm going to ask for a motion because we have made changes from when we last approved the budget. I need to have a motion to approve article two, the operating budget. So Mr. Vayou makes a motion, Mr. Gransstra seconds. Those in favor of approving the warrant article, operating budgets. And none opposed, so that passes. I also need a motion to move article two, operating budget to the deliberative session. Mr. Vayou, motion, Mr. Gransstra second. Those in favor moving to, moving our article two, operating budget to deliberative session. And that's, that passes. Okay. So on to our special warrant articles. Article three is our maintenance fund warrant article, where we're requesting $220,000 to be added to the trust fund to support our scheduled maintenance program. And this money would come from the June thirtieth unassigned fund balance and no new money would be, would be raised from taxation. We're going to the next slide. Thank you. Our Director of Building and Grounds has worked with the Sohegan Maintenance Staff to create a plan of building and system maintenance. The chart here shows a ten-year, ten years of plan and the first three years of spending is needed on building skylights. And the skylights, so the skylights are original to our building and they're failing, which is causing some leaking inside the school. We currently have temporary covers on the skylights to ensure safety of everyone in the building. I would also like to add that the opaqueness of the skylights no longer meets code requirements for the building. So therefore, we're requesting $220,000 be put into this maintenance fund to allow us to maintain our building properly by funding the first two phases of skylight replacement. And the third phase would then occur in FY twenty-nine. And as you look at this chart, you can see we have planned maintenance to ensure our building is in good working order and provides a safe environment for the students and visitors in our school. We have scheduled generator and fire system maintenance, auditorium flooring and boiler maintenance and replacement, as well as general painting, ceiling, landscaping and furniture needs. And again, the money would come from the unassigned fund balance and we are not requesting any new money raised from taxation. So that, that's our article three. Just want to see if anyone has any questions on that article that are in the public. Nope, okay. So I, if there's no questions, I'm going to, we've already approved this particular warrant article. So I'd like to just have a motion to move article three, Sohegan School Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund to the deliberative session. Yes. I, I think we're, we're going to do them at the very end of our warrant article since they have one slide that addresses all of them. I thought we'd come back to them. Thank you. All right, so the motion. So we'll keep it consistent. Mr. Vayou makes a motion, Mr. Gransstra seconds. Those in favor to move article three, Sohegan School Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund to the deliberative session. And that passes. All right, the, now we'll have to go back. All right. So article four, turf field replacement warrant article. FY twenty-two is the first year we brought this full, buck forward this warrant article to raise an even amount of money over the next four years to be ready to replace the turf field. We continue to raise money through rental fees and have reevaluation of the amount of money needed to be raised based on estimated replacement costs. Based on the current balance and new estimates received for replacement of the turf field, we are decreasing our request by $15,000 to $70,000. The $70,000 asked for the year-end unassigned fund balance. This money is in a separate account and will not be used for any other purposes. Again, we're asking for this money to be, come from the unassigned fund balance and we're not asking for additional money to be raised from the taxpayer this year. The turf field does provide a benefit to our sports programs. They are able to hold games even in inclement weather, whether the bean fields or front fields are not permitted to be used. It also provides a benefit from rental of the fields when the private soccer and field hockey clubs, they look to rent when they have their tournaments. Again, this is, I, very much like all of our warrant articles, we're using them to help keep a level taxation to the, the, the towns by providing a level funding over a number of years. We can then draw it when we need the money. So I'd just like to see if there's any questions on this warrant article. Anything? Yes. Correct. We, we've been asking for eighty-five thousand and we're just asking for seventy as there's new evaluations and the money that we've been receiving as revenue has helped support it. So we are in good shape so far. So seeing no questions, I'd take a motion to move article four, turf field replacement to the deliberative session. Mr. Vayou and Mr. Gransstra seconds, those in favor. And that moves forward as well. And the next one, article five, is our last article. It's a technology fund warrant article. It's new this year and it's request to establish to fund a technology capital reserve fund similar to the capital maintenance fund. This fund would allow us to even out requests of funding for planned technology needs. And the Director of Technology at the SAU is building a five to ten-year plan of technology requirements. We do know that we will have some expensive switch replacements needed within the next two to three years. And we believe smoothing out the cost of the taxpayer by establishing a capital reserve fund is responsible budgeting. The money to establish this fund would come from the unassigned fund balance and no new money would be raised from taxation. Are there any questions on this article from anyone? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to move article five, technology fund to the deliberative session. Mr. Vayou and Mr. Gransstra, those in favor? All right, that also passes. All right, then the last. There we go. Jeannie, do you want to come back up and address the warrant articles? Thank you.
Lot of coordinating of the slides. Sorry about that. So basically that our statement, even though it says we unanimously support, we haven't voted on them, but our statement sort of reveals our support in, in effect. We say that we note that it has been an ongoing recommendation of the committee for the administration to create long-term plans. That has been something we've mentioned in the past for the maintenance and upkeep of the facilities and we are pleased to see articles three, four and five responding to these recommendations. The one question that I did have that we just were talking about was we certainly value the fact that you are taking, using unassigned fund balance to fund two of these articles. Our, our question is if, if in the end there, there isn't enough to fund those two, do you try to fund them partially or not at all?
So it basically starts with the first, the article that comes in line first.
Okay.
And that gets fully funded if there's unassigned fund balance. If there's leftover unassigned fund balance, you go to your next warrant article and you fund that one. Now if there's money left, you'll fund that one. So we put them in a specific order.
Okay.
Knowing that what we think is most important comes first.
That's good to know. I don't know if you wanted me to go on to the others.
Sure.
Our final observations and recommendations at this point.
Sure. Yeah.
And basically, a lot of the things I have Basically, a lot of the things I have mentioned already, we believe that there has been better articulation of the SAU strategic directions this year, especially in terms of the budget process and the stakeholders. We've improved upon connecting future program, programming goals with staffing requirements. The district is still facing continued turnover of legacy teaching staff, but the administration is addressing the quality of education through better support of the newer teaching staff, which is important, using the domain leader position. And coming out of two years of COVID, the administration has redoubled its effort to improve instructional proficiency and have restarted teacher evaluation and mentoring, all of which is valued by the committee and of course, the public. And the current administration appears to embrace the principles enumerated in the Constitution and the concept of the Coalition of Essential Schools, which again, is something that is something we've emphasized as being important. In the next slide, our recommendations are to continue to support a high-level, multi-year forecast. You've heard us mention that in the past as critical in assessing the current year budget and informing voter voters on the adequacy of the current year budget. A multi-year plan would provide a tool to evaluate the follow-through on stated prior year priorities. A multi-year plan would allow for the scheduling of salary growth under the PPC and the cost of transitioning qualification of teaching staff envisioned under the strategic plan. And we know this year, the administration has taken steps to begin this process and the, the Finance Committee supports that effort. A comprehensive set of metrics should be developed and applied over time. We seem to be singing that song every year and to be able to focus on manage, focus on manage and report on services provided regarding student-teacher ratios, student-facing programs, et cetera. And then the next series of slides are basically the highlights of our reports and you can probably zip through those pretty fast. You know, stated our observations.
How fast would you?
As you can see, in each of the, each of our reports talks about our, you know, our particular budget function and the changes that have occurred from the FY '23 to '24 budget, the three-year average, our observations and any sort of highlights, things that have jumped out as being, standing out in that particular function. You can go ahead, Steve. Again, just in this particular slide, talking about, as Tim emphasized, that we reduced the amount requested for turf, the turf replacement project because Roger Preston, the Director of Facilities, has done another sort of cost estimate and determined that we're going to have adequate amount, so we don't have to ask for quite as much. So that's good to know. The next one, food and transportation, the one thing that I believe, and this may fall under special ed, this is special ed transportation budget has gone up due to a new contractual arrangement with the new company. So that's something that's a little different this year. Next one, facilities. Again, you know, shout out to our Director of Facilities for developing a five-year maintenance plan and for keeping us on track. And new requests are the Assistant Groundskeeper, which were, was mentioned earlier, and phased-in replacement of leaking skylights that will take us out until, I believe, 2029. And just the, the last meeting, actually, there was a public hearing regarding the first phase and the board approved the first phase cost estimate. Next, Student Services. Again, that's pretty straightforward. Next one. Curriculum, always Joel, Joel's favorite. He always has a lot of good recommendations, so you may want to take a real close look at that one. And then the next, I think we have another, and then the administration again, just with some observations about a slight increase. So I think that takes us to the end. Yep, so, thank you.
Thank you. I will look forward to hearing from you on your votes after tonight's meeting. Okay, back to ours. There's one, well, two slides left. The next one, yep, right there. Yep, so in summary, we're requesting funds for the FY '24 operating budget of $20,368,691, or it's a 2.1, 2.8% increase from FY '23. We're requesting 220,000 for the Capital Maintenance Trust Fund, 70,000 for the Turf Field Maintenance Fund, and 25,000 for the Technology Fund. These three maintenance funds would come from the unassigned fund balance and we're not requesting additional money raised from taxation. But I do want to clarify where you see the 3.9%. The reason you see the overall increase is because we're not returning money to the taxpayer. It show, it is an actual increase in the change of our budget requests. So our overall increase, including all warrant articles, is 3.9%. So that concludes our presentation. The last, last thing I just want to point out, and there's something I do want to add on there. So we're here on the public, public hearing. Our deliberative session will be in the auditorium on February 7th. And we do have two other public hearings I do want to point out. One is here in Amherst and one is in Mont Vernon. It is for a Citizens Petition Warrant Article. So on February 20th at 6:00 PM, we'll have a public hearing here and on this, in this room in the Learning Commons for Amherst. And on February 22nd at 5:00 PM is a public hearing at Mont Vernon Village School for the Citizens Petition Article. So those are two additions that have just, we've just added to our schedule. And then district voting is March 14th, so we will see you all at the polls. And that's all I have. Public comment? Public comment?
Lisa Eastland. Yeah, it's on. Okay, yeah, Lisa Eastland, Amherst. I just had a question about the warrant article. I didn't, it says set aside 220,000. So I just want to clarify. What happens if you don't have 220,000 in the year-end budget? Does that not get funded at all? Because it doesn't say up to.
It's up to.
So what was your reasoning behind that? Can you? No, it says aside. It just says set aside. On the thing, on the slide, it said, set aside 220,000.
Because the intent is up to.
Okay, so maybe it was, maybe it was.
Yeah, well.
Okay, so it might have been the Advisory Finance Committee slide, because I just saw it. I was like, whoa, set aside, that.
It's up to.
That seems very restrictive.
Yes, it is up to, yes. Thank you. Yes, no problem. Any other questions from the public? February 20th here at 6:00 PM. And at Mont Vernon, it's at 5:00 PM. Okay. Anything else? That's it? All right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Peters and Anna, you said, Anna is the second, those in favor closing public hearing and we are done. Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you, Sohegan Finance Committee, for all of your work.
For your work.